All to please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the majesty states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Cahill absent. Toledo?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Nudera?
Here.
Bastido absent. Nardini?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Erby?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Shenko?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. Do we have a, we do have a quorum. I'm sorry, we're starting a bit late. We had executive session and a little bit of technical difficulty, but we appreciate your patience. We move on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have Patricia Hudson.
All right, Ms. Hudson, if you would proceed to the microphone sort of towards the back, please state your name. Your address is optional, and you have three minutes. And you might have to adjust the microphone to your liking.
Hello? Hi, my name is Patricia Hudson. I live at 515 North Howard in Elmhurst. I came here today because I wanted to speak. My mother was the pedestrian who was killed on York Road this past week, and I've been looking at a lot of information after she passed because she had complained to me about the intersection at Diverzy and York. And after her death, I looked at all the information that previously in 2020, that intersection had been surveyed for a possible traffic light. I read the information that was included in the survey. I saw that it didn't warrant a traffic light, but there were numerous recommendations made in that report that, to me, I don't believe were ever implemented, that I can tell. There were recommendations to install signs on Grand prohibiting left turns onto the side roads that lead to Diverzy during rush hour. I didn't see any of those. Make side roads from Grand to Diverzy one ways going north. That doesn't appear to have happened. And work with the businesses near the intersection to reduce the number of curb cuts at each site. That doesn't appear to have happened either. So my purpose in coming here today is to request that there be some level of intervention. I personally would like to see another survey done four years later. When I went to see the site where my mother died, I watched people running across York, children running across York during the day. As everybody knows, Churchill is like 600 feet from the intersection of Diverzy and York. I believe that the risk still is there. There was a previous fatality, which was mentioned the first time around, that this survey was done, and it was in the Elmhurst Patch. I read it. And now you had another fatality. So my request is that we have another survey to see if maybe there's another intervention, because I'm concerned that nothing has been done to make that intersection safer.
Sorry for your loss and thank you for your comments. Clerk Tamer, has anyone else signed in for public comment?
That's it, ma'am.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like the opportunity to make public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign in? If so, please raise your hand. All right, we will close public forum. Receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone that has a written communication that he or she would like to deliver to the council? So please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Erby?
Thank you, ma'am. I've got two quick announcements. One is for the police department, we have the Citizens Police Academy. It has a March 22 deadline, and I highly recommend as being someone who's gone through the program, highly encourage you to do that and take advantage of. So that's available. Second item is ComEd's residential EV charger rebate has been opened as of February 1, so it's live. Basically, it's $2,500 to $3,750. If you purchase it after February 1, you've got 90 days. And if you go to the ComEd Clean Energy page, click on the "For Home" picture, and then under there, there is the application for the rebate. That'll, that budget probably will hold about 1,000 applications. And if you're thinking about an EV car, it's kind of nice to have the charger. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Erby. Other announcements? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is rather healthy. Clerk Tamer, if you will read the consent agenda, please.
6.1 Executive Session Meeting Minutes of the Elmhurst City Council on December 18, 2023. 6.2 Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on January 16, 2024. 6.3 Accounts Payable February 5, 2024, $2,353,892. 6.4 Appointment to the Senior Citizen Commission, Jennifer Vince and Terry Gepner. 6.5 Appointment to the Firefighters Punch and Fon, Mark Zier. 6.6 Case 24PO1 Churchville Middle School Conditional Use Permit for a Planned Unit Development, 155 Victory Parkway. 6.7 Report Request for Extension, Mestrino. 6.8 Report DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference 2024 Legislative Action Program. 6.9 Report Adams and Stratford Intersection Control. 6.10 Report Rental of Chiller for Elmhurst Police Department. 6.11 Report 2024 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and Televising. 6.12 Report Professional Engineering Agreement for the Eldred Storm Water Station Improvements. 6.13 Report 2024 Computer Management Maintenance Software Assistance. 6.14 WRF Bundle Number 4 Contract Amendment. 6.15 Report Eclaira Technology Hosting and Maintenance. 6.16 Report Native Grass Stewardship Contract. 6.17 Report Professional Services Agreement for Utility Integrated Services. 6.18 Report 2024 Agreement for BioSilids Solids Loading, Hauling, and Spreading Services. 6.19 Report 2024 Sanitary Sewer Improvements and Forced Main Replacements. 6.20 Report Construction Engineering Services Agreement for Sanitary Sewer Improvements and Forced Main Replacements. 6.21 Report 2023 Contract Paving Program Balancing Change Order, seeing item 9.1. 6.22 An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Non-Exclusive License Agreement Buy-in Between the Elmhurst St. Patrick's Day Committee and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 6.23 An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Non-Exclusive License Agreement Buy-in Between Elmhurst Running Club, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 6.24 An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Non-Exclusive License Agreement Buy-in Between DuPage Cycling Foundation and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 6.25 An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Third Amendment to the Lease Agreement Buy-in Between Chicago SNSA Limited Partnership DBA, Verizon Wireless, and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 6.26 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Resident Engineering Services Agreement with Engineering Resource Associates, Inc. for the 2024 Contract Paving Program. 6.27 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Engineering Services Agreement between Chastain and Associates, LLC and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, in connection with the city's pavement management system. 6.28 A Resolution Authorizing the City of Elmhurst to Accept and Execute a Water Transmission and Delivery Agreement among the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, American Water Company, and the DuPage Water Commission, and the Increase of Water Wheeling Rate to the Illinois American Water Company pursuant to Section 5(c) of the Water Transmission and Delivery Agreement among the City of Elmhurst Citizens Utilities Company of Illinois, now known as Illinois American Water Company, and the DuPage Water Commission dated August 15, 1994. 6.29 A Resolution to Approve and Authorize the Execution of a Temporary License Agreement Buy-in Between Brixmore Elmhurst Crossing LLC and the City of Elmhurst. 6.30 A Resolution to Approve and Authorize the Execution of a Professional Design Engineering Services Agreement Buy-in Between Bravo Company Engineering, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst for Alma Avenue Reconstruction Project Phase 2. 6.31 A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Streetlight and Signal Poles for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.32 A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Notice of Award and Authorizing the Execution of a Contract for the 2024, 2025, excuse me, 2024 through 2026 Street Sweeping Project for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove for either further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Erby?
Thank you, ma'am. 6.8 and 6.25. I'll repeat those once again. 6.8, 6.25.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, less items 6.8 and 6.25. Alderman Bram with the motion. Alderman Shenko with the second. Clerk Tamer?
Cahill absent. Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido absent. Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. The consent agenda minus item 6.8 and 6.25 is adopted. Onto item 6.8. Clerk Tamer, please read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution to endorse and adopt the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference 2024 Legislative Action Program. Sign Noel P. Toledo, Chair, Chris Johnson, Vice Chair, and James Nudera and Rex Erby.
All right, may I have a motion to bring item 6.8, to approve 6.8, Alderman Toledo, second Alderman Jensen. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. This is a annual-
Hold it, Tito. I want to pull the mic down. Thanks.
I'm pretty loud.
Yeah, I know.
This is an annual item of business that the Finance Committee undertakes. It's basically lending the city council's endorsement of the legislative priorities for the DuPage Mayors and Managers Council when they go and lobby state legislators on behalf of municipalities in DuPage County. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Erby?
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Chair, for the intro on the topic of 6.8. I believe in what the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference does. It's an alternate body from this, from the City of Elmhurst City Council, and I will respectfully not be voting for it. I'll be a no vote. The reason why is because even though I did sign the report, people say, well, Alderman Erby, you signed the report. Well, that's why when I, as alderman, we listen to our constituents, we reflect, and we can change our minds over time. So I'd like to keep that separate. The city council is a separate body from the DMMC, so I don't want to have any avoid, or I do want to avoid conflicts of interest, both perceived and real, if they do exist. Second is because my personal ethical framework. If you cannot will it upon the masses, you cannot will it upon yourself. That's Kantianism. So with those two points, I will not be supporting this, even though I do support privately what goes on at the DuPage Managers Mayor's Caucus, whether it's for or against something. It is by definition political in nature because you have to go down and do a legislative change, and I want to keep myself separate from that, and I can do that privately, but not from the dais. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I just will offer as comment, just so people understand, I am the Vice Chair of DuPage Mayors and Managers. It is a, an association of the 35 municipalities in DuPage County, and we all work together to develop our joint legislative plan. Some of them are, of the issues particularly related to, one of the three major topics stems directly from issues that we have faced and have asked to be advocated, but I, it's a not-for-profit group, not politically affiliated with any party. It's just to further the efforts, in this case legislatively, of our conference. In case, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with it, but I just wanted to offer that. I usually don't participate directly in the debate, but just informational. Anyone else? All right, Clerk Tamer?
Cahill absent. Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido absent. Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
No.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay, two absent.
Eleven ayes, one nay, two absent. Item 6.8 is adopted. We'll move on to item 6.25. Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a Third Amendment to the lease agreement buy-in between Chicago SNSA Limited Partnership DBA, Verizon Wireless, and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois.
May I have a motion to approve 6.25? Alderman Toledo, second Alderman Jensen, Alderman Toledo.
I will just give a brief summary. I did not pull this from the consent agenda. This is a ordinance a year later than when we approved the report as a city council, but back in February of 2023, the prior Finance Committee approved a report, and the council approved that report to approve adding a wireless cellphone service antenna to the West Water Tower in Elmhurst. That amended an existing lease agreement with Verizon. It increased the monthly rent commensurately to a monthly amount of $4,600. So the City of Elmhurst is offsetting its costs on its elevated water tank via a lease to provide cellphone service to folks in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Chair, again. A little bit deja vu for me. Roughly a year ago, when this item came out of Finance, and then it went the next week to full council, I came up and spoke public comments about this item. And subsequently, we have, from my visual today, we have installed the three radios that are in the report and part of this ordinance. There were nine radios up on that tower at the top attributable to this lease. Those radios come in at $547 a radio. So I'm covering two points here. One is the financial aspect. Secondarily will be the health aspect, which I'm not an expert on that, but that's the point I raised a year ago. But I did not raise the price or anything with respect to the financial side of the contract. That's pretty much water under the bridge. The radios are up, and we're probably going to be collecting or have collected our money, so I'm going to allow that to go, or not make any comments other than the three extra radios do have extra power that emit from the top of the tower. So when you're up in front of a radio tower or a cellphone tower, it has massive warning signs that if you get too close to it, you'll be literally endangering yourself. It's unhealthy. Kind of like a microwave, but they're, they're not quite the same, but their, their frequency, and there are a lot of power, otherwise you wouldn't get the two or three or four bars on your phone. So many feet to a couple miles away from a tower. So it is important to have that power, but there is a limit. And so a year ago, I spoke on that limit, and we were at 600% of FCC guidelines for occupational health from emissions from that tower at that level with the nine radios. Now we have 12 radios.
Erby, when you took me an antenna?
The radios are attached to an antenna.
Okay.
So the antenna is what throws the energy out. The radio is what generates it to the antenna, just like a car radio or any other radio have. So to wrap this up for this item, we've added those three extra radios. The problem I've had is, or still have today, is what is our radiation exposure when we add new items to our system? How do I, as an alderman, protect the constituents in the, in the, in the town? And so that's what this is all about. So I don't have all the answers for that. I'd like to get that for everybody. So that, and that's why I'll be voting no, just like I would have voted a year ago, no for this, and today I'll vote no. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Erby. Additional comment? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, just more of a question on this. Alderman Erby made a statement in regards to these antennas are already installed, but we're here tonight to pass the ordinance. So if I could just get a clarification of the chain of events that occurred, I'd appreciate that.
All right, is that the city attorney or city manager would like to?
I can't speak authoritatively. Whether there are 12 up there, I'm sorry.
I think the question is if they're up there and we're just approving the contract tonight.
I can't speak to that. I'm not aware that they're up. I'm not, I'm not aware. I heard what Alderman Erby said, that he's counted 12 up there. I thought there was nine up there.
I'll just ask, we don't have to deliberate. If we could just follow up-
Well, I would say, as the Finance Chair said, this was, the report was done approximately a year ago. It did take some time to get the contract going, and then it did, for some reason, fall off the radar as far as bringing the ordinance here. The city attorney pointed that out to me. I said, let's make sure we get that on. We will be sure that, one, if the work went forward, that, I know that we were there inspecting it, because we would, we would do that. We would not let anybody have access to the tower without that supervision. And two, that they are paying their lease. We'll double-check that and report back to you, Alderman.
Thank you. All right, additional comments, questions? Clerk Tamer?
Cahill absent. Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido absent. Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
No.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay, two absent.
Eleven ayes, one nay, two absent. Reports, ordinance 6.25 is adopted. We'll move on to reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor Levin, this Tuesday, February 30-
Of order?
Yeah.
Skip 7.1.
Oh, there it is, right at the top of the page. Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Reports. Report 7.1, Clerk Tamer, would you read the report, please?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the municipal code of ordinances changing the water rate, sewer rate, unmetered well rate, and capital investment recovery charges as outlined above, effective for the usage build on or after March 1, 2024. Sign Noel P. Toledo, Chair, Chris Johnson, Vice Chair, and James Nudera and Rex Erby.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve report 7.1, Alderman Toledo, second Alderman Jensen, Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. So I have to make a little joke. And yes, I am getting old enough to have to wear glasses now as well, so multiple things to note tonight. This, I'm, we're well-known on Finance for some pretty long reports. This one may top, may top them all in, in my year serving. So I think it's seven pages.
Nine, nine pages.
Nine, okay. A lot of pages. I think it reflects the importance of this topic for, to ensure that not only the members of the council who are voting on this tonight, but also the members of the public, understand the amount of work and evaluation and analysis that went into the decision, and explains the reasons for the decision being recommended tonight. So I'll go ahead with some of my summary comments on the report. I first off want to start by thanking the many people that were involved to date, including our residents, staff, and our committee members. We spent a lot of time asking many questions, gathering information, and evaluating options. And I'll start by saying that our recommendation tonight does not come lightly. We understand that increased cost for water and sewer service is not popular and will impact residents and businesses' pocketbooks. In fact, mindful of cost increases that everyone is experiencing, the city council recently passed a zero tax levy increase, keeping the city portion of property taxes flat to the prior year. At the same time, clean and reliable water and sewer service is one of the fundamental utilities provided by a local municipality. To ensure reliability, our system needs investment, both in the mains that transport the water and sewage, as well as the water reclamation facility. The need is clear. What is also clear is that if the investment is delayed, the costs will only go up over time. Simply put, if we kick the can down the road, we will have even higher rates in the future, or worse, end up like some of the unfortunate towns we have heard about in the news recently. So I'll go ahead and provide some additional context for what the committee considered during its deliberation process. First, I think it's important for members of the public and newer members on the council to understand that the city has regularly conducted 10-year capital planning studies for the water and sewer system and the associated rates. These studies were conducted in 2014, 2019, and again in 2023. The 2019 study was used to set the rates both in 2021 and 2022. Notably, there was no rate increase in 2020 during the pandemic due to the council's desire to provide some semblance of financial stability for residents during that unstable time. When the 2023 study was updated, the result was an overall increase in the 10-year cost for the system of approximately $100 million, or 36% compared to the 2019 study costs. This difference was driven by price inflation, a policy decision to return to the 100-year main replacement cycle timing, and the increased scope of capital projects at the water reclamation facility. There is additional detail about this in the full report. Now I'll talk a little bit about the four major components, or the four components in the utility bill. First is the water rate charged by the DuPage Water Commission. This is the cost we pay to buy water from the DuPage Water Commission. The City of Elmhurst simply passes this rate along to the user. The recommended rate for 2024 is $5.60 per 1,000 gallons of water, which is an 8% increase. The second and third components of the utility bill are the volumetric water and sewer rates respectively. Volumetric rates are charged per 1,000 gallons and cover the regular operating costs such as salaries, commodities, and annual capital programs such as water and sewer main replacement. This latter cost, driven up by inflation and the aforementioned policy decision to fund the replacement of the mains on a 100-year replacement cycle instead of a longer cycle that we were on, increased $3.5 million annually from the 2019 study to the 2023 study. Given this, the recommended water and sewer rates are $90.20 for water and $114.50 for sewer respectively, a 40% increase to current rates. Finally, the fourth component of the utility bill is the CERC rate, or Capital Investment Recovery Charge. The CERC is a flat fee charged each billing cycle and is based on the size of the water meter at that property. The bigger your water meter, the higher your CERC fee. This fee funds the debt service costs of the system. Given the increase in the capital plan costs due to inflation and scope expansion, the recommended CERC fee- the recommended CERC fee for a typical average 1-inch meter is $42.88. That's an 11% increase over the current rate. Combining all of these components into a typical bill for a family of four that uses 10,000 gallons of water per billing period, the bi-monthly bill would increase $66.98, or a total of 28% compared to current rates. On page 7 of the report is additional detail on how those rates play out on an average bill. When comparing our new rate recommendation to other comparable communities that have a similar system age, similar capacity, and billing cycles, our committee noted that we are actually quite similar. Our rates are similar to Itasca, Rochelle, Rock Island, to name a few. Additionally, many of the communities that have lower rates than Elmhurst have not yet begun planning for the phosphorus mandate that is embedded in our planning, which will increase those lower community rates to a comparable level in the near future. We're getting close to the end. Something else that the committee considered was assisting senior citizens in Elmhurst with these rate increases. Senior citizens are often on a fixed income with limited flexibility financially. And the committee recommends waiving the full CERC charge for 10 months through the end of 2024 for senior citizens that qualify for the Senior Assessment Freeze, which is a program in DuPage County. This discount will benefit about 535 households in Elmhurst that qualify for this program, which is managed by the county and requires an income level of $65,000 or less. Waiving the CERC fee results in a bi-monthly discount for those that qualify of $42.88, or approximately $215 for the remainder of 2024. This program and other programs that exist to help residents who are struggling to pay their utility bill will be communicated in upcoming utility bill mailers, as well as through various city communications. If anyone that is listening to this believes that they would qualify for the senior discount to this rate increase, please contact the city of Elmhurst Finance Department. But also note that if you are already qualified for the Senior Assessment Freeze, you will automatically have the rate discount applied to your water bill. There are two additional future considerations that do not affect the recommended rate increase this year, but are worth noting as they may impact rates in the future. The first is the consideration of a tiered rate structure. That is a rate structure that encourages water conservation. That is something that, due to the implementation of our new, that's your? ERP, thank you. Our new ERP system in the city of Elmhurst, we were not able to implement a program like that due to the implementation of that new computer software program across our billing system and other, basically every major division of our city functions. Additionally, that tiered rate structure does require some additional analysis, planning, and communication. And so that will be looked at this calendar year for possible implementation with a 2025 water rate recommendation. The second consideration is the possible addition of a phosphorus fee. And that would be implemented to help pay for the future modifications to the system that are being planned for that would achieve the EPA required mandate to remove more phosphorus from our wastewater stream. That's the end of my comments. Thank you for your attention, your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer? I'm sorry, Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I just want to speak to this. I've been deliberating this for a while now. As Alderman Toledo Chair Toledo already mentioned, this is a very tough discussion to be had, a very tough discuss, or decision to be made. I've spoken with some of my fellow aldermen already about this topic, and I've stated at that time that even walking into the building tonight, I'm not sure where I even land when it comes to the vote tonight. I will say that there is a need. There's absolutely a need. I will talk about the wastewater treatment plant. We were approximately, I don't remember the exact number, so please do not quote me. But it was about $8 million over budget. Significant, significantly over budget. So there is capital needs that need to get done. My concerns were twofold coming into tonight. First being, should we do this now? And yes, we evaluate, and most of the time, not all the time, but most of the time do a water rate increase every year. So it's not out of the ordinary to actually broach this topic. It is out of the ordinary to broach this topic with a percentage or a number as high as we are discussing tonight. And the reason why I say, do we need to do this now in this manner, is how do we get to that destination? And the destination being having enough funds to do all the capital projects, as Chair Toledo already stated. One of the bullet points I was curious about, and Director Bulicki was able to provide for me, is yes, it is, I would say, a relatively recent or newer goal of doing more water main replacement than we've done previously, or at least for a long time. It's my understanding that for the last three years, we've done close to zero water main replacement, which is just unacceptable. We as a town cannot continue that trend. I think somewhere in the report, nine pages, somewhere in the report, it states, the 60s or something is ringing a bell to me of how old some of our water main is in town. Those of you who have suffered from a water main break, right? One, the city itself is paying for water that goes unused because it's just going into the street and none of our residents are using it. City of Chicago does not give that for free and does not give us a waiver. But two, then that subsequently means boil orders, et cetera, et cetera. But one of the points of view or stats that I looked for was how many water main breaks have we had over the past three years when we've done no water main replacement? And I appreciate this data. And last year, I'm looking, my eyes are failing me as well. In 2023, approximately, it does say exactly 60, but I'll give a waiver in case it's not exactly, but 60, the prior year, 97, 72. In 2019, however, we had 145 water main breaks. And the reason why I bring this up is, do we really need to do this significant of an increase today? And I appreciate the staff and the committee, all their hard work on this. They've talked about it on multiple occasions. And staff has provided a lot of data, and the report is all-inclusive. For those in the audience, there was also a fact that was at Frequently Asked Questions page, pages to help us dive through all the data points of what is being proposed. So if I just look at this data in regards to the last three years, I have not seen, just from that stat alone, not seen any increase in water main breaks over the past three years when we've done pretty close to nothing in regards to replacement. Of course, the weather has something to do with it. Of course, the age has something to do with it as well. The other point I want to make is there's very tough decisions in this report, or this recommendation by the committee, one of which is a reserve, to achieve a reserve of $5.5 million. I believe it was an operating reserve, I believe, as well as replacing 5 million, which puts, as Alderman Toledo already stated, on a 100-year plan replacing the water main. Even though I think this is aggressive in these times because of the fact that we have so many capital improvements before us, what's been in our budget, what's coming down the line, we need to make decisions on the trains, the metro train station, the police department building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Storm sewer, we already made that decision. But there's so many capital projects heading our way, not all of which impact the MUF fund, but I was, had great concern. My other concern was, shouldn't we just wait until we implement this ERP, the newer ERP software, and do it at the same time? Or implement it on the older software? The potential of doing a tiered rate structure? Even though I would prefer that, I think that is the best way to go about it. I'm going to support this report, even though I believe that it's an aggressive ask in these times, during these times, with all the capital improvement projects ahead of us, to do the reserve that's being proposed, to do the amount of water main projects, replacement projects that we have on the calendar year for this year, because it needs to be done. I think we need to move forward with it and make sure that we reduce as much as we possibly can the water main breaks that happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bram. Additional comments? Alderman Toledo?
I did just want to point out, Alderman Bram mentioned it, there is a Frequently Asked Questions, which, about the water and sewer rate, and I think that's very helpful. I would just point members of the public to that document as well for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that answer, Alderman Toledo. Responding to Alderman Bram, he mentioned the reserve and the, and the need to up our water main game. The reserve, and correct me if I'm wrong with the chair or city manager, is we are not going to achieve that reserve by the end of the year, December 31st. I think we're targeting just shy of a million, per the report. You'll notice there's a graph in there that has a, that's showing you what the targets are for the MUF. So we did scale back our aggressiveness so that we did not hit the 5 million reserve. Does that sound correct, Chair? So we're looking for under a million, or we're hoping to hit near a million. And I think we're going to hit the water main. And I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had 132 water mains breaks in 2023? Does that sound correct? On silence, I'll take it for now until someone corrects me. Historically, we've had 108 water main breaks per year for the last 20-something years. And they've kind of cropped up. I mean, last two weeks, we had six in one day. So I don't have a water main crystal ball, but I can tell you they're not, they're not cheap to fix. And as Alderman Bram mentioned, they leak water when that does happen. And when you have them happening that long, we have five or six vehicles and seven or eight, nine, 10 staff that are dedicated to each water main break. And so we can only do so many at a time. I doubt we can do two, three at a time. Maybe we're lucky we get two done at a time, but it really stretches our resources. I'm sure city manager could comment, and the public works director could. So just want to make sure we got clear on those two points. So I don't want to make people think that we've, we're hitting those numbers with these rates. We're, we did a lot of deliberation, and I want to thank the chair and my, and my team as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Additional comment? Alderman Bram?
Yes, just to clarify, the numbers that I got for 2023 for water main breaks was 60, 6-0. In 2022, 97, 97. And 2021, 72. The other thing to clarify, my statement was more about the operating reserve goal. Right now, the graph before me, the red is orange, is showing budget year 2023 at 6 million and then hovering between 5.5 and 6 million. That's the statement I was referring to earlier. Alderman Erby is correct when mentioning about the fund balance, though. The fund balance being projected a little bit over a million and getting up to, close to that $5 million in about 2031, if I'm still alive.
I think we have hope for that. All right. Additional discussion? Clerk Tamer?
Cahill absent, Toledo?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido absent.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schencko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, two absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, two absent. The report is adopted. Ordinance, the, I do want to, first of all, thank the committee. This was a very difficult task, and I know they had multiple meetings. I sat in on some of them. It's a very difficult topic. Staff provided a lot of valuable information, and it's painful. But I do agree that we've reached the right painful decision. And Chair, thank you for your diligence in that. I want to add two other comments on this topic. I was at a mayor's only coffee where every quarter or couple of months, the mayors from the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference get together and talk about topics of concern. And I brought up our water rate issue. And the other mayors assured me that if they haven't increased theirs already, they will be. We might be ahead of the curve. But particularly, the phosphorus issue is one that is weighing heavily upon a lot of municipalities and is noted in the report, and as they noted to me. Some of the mayors were from communities where their water systems might have been put in the 70s or 80s, and ours is much older. So we necessarily have a little bit more to do. I also want to just note that in terms of the water main replacements, we didn't do any in 2022. I don't want people to get the impression that we just didn't do it. We couldn't get materials in 2022 to do the water main replacement. And we did do about 800,000 worth in 2023, about a third of what we usually do. But we were concerned about the high cost of materials that we were getting. So I think we're getting back on track. I don't want to go with the Dixmore model, which is fix a water main every week and have a little fire there where you can all gather around town. So this is a responsible way to do it, and good work. All right. Will you move on? I hope, did you get your joke in there, Mayor Alderman Toledo? All right, we're very good. All right.
I was going to call Dixmore out, but you, you did for me, so thank you.
Oh, I was reading your mind. Now, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor Levin, we are redoing our downtown plan. And there are a number of, we're taking a lot of input from different components of the community. On February 13th, between 6:30 and 8:00, the public will have an opportunity to weigh in at our plan workshop, which will be right here in chambers, followed by an opportunity for the business community to weigh in.
I'm sorry, that's AM, 8:00 to 9:30 AM for the business community.
That's same day, so it will be well before 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning will be the opportunity for the business community to weigh in. So a business community, 8:00 to 9:30 AM on the 13th, and the evening, 6:30, 8:00, the public. And any member of the public that has an interest in the development of our downtown as we go forward, that's an opportunity to be heard. That is all I have. City manager?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Onto resolutions, 9.1. Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of change order number one for the 2023 contract paving project. See item 6.21.
All right. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 9.1? Alderman Bram with motion, Alderman Schencko with a second. Alderman Bram?
Yes, previously on the consent agenda, we already, we already approved the report. The reason why we're asking to suspend the rules and do this on the same night is actually to help city staff close the 2023 books sooner than later instead of waiting additional weeks to be able to do that.
Thank you, Alderman Bram. Any discussion on 9.1? Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Cahill absent, Toledo?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido absent.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schencko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
12- Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, two absents.
12 ayes, zero nays, two absents. Resolution 9.1 is adopted. Item 10, other businesses. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. When possible, I like to acknowledge our young adults that come to our city council meetings, even if it is for a school assignment, but I'd like to welcome Eddie Milanovich and his father Neb tonight. Thank you for being here, and I hope you enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements? All right, seeing none. Item 11, adjournment. Motion to adjourn, Alderman Schenko. Second, Alderman Veremus. Roll call, please.
Cahill, absent, Toledo.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido, absent, Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremus.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Schenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, two absents.
12 ayes, zero nays, two absents. We are adjourned. Thank you all.